Okay, good evening. January 7th, 2025, the Harvard Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. You're looking at a new face up here, me. Our Mr. Carbonetti has ended his career in this seat, so I've been asked to sit in it for a while. We'll see how it goes. So I'd like to call the meeting to order. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Grisham.
Here.
Albertson.
Here.
Creviston.
Here.
Hereley.
Here.
McCafferty. Patnodd. For Miss President.
Do we have anybody that wants to offer any comments that are not related to any of the hearings being presented this evening? Want to talk about the weather, you want to do anything? No? Okay. All right, then we'll open the first hearing. The first hearing is for Dresko Farms LLC, the petitioner. And... Oh, sorry, we missed that. Before we go on to the first thing, we have to approve the meeting minutes from November 5th. I need a motion from Commissioner, a Commissioner to approve the minutes from November 5th, 2024.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion has been approved or put forth and seconded, put forth by Commissioner Creviston, approved by Commissioner, or seconded by Commissioner Albertson. All those in...
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, now we can go to item five. We're going to open the hearing for Dresko Farms LLC, who is a petitioner, and Elvis Henson Trust, 21 Family Trust. The property owner, the petitioners are seeking a conditional use pursuant to Section 14.3 of the Unified Development Code to permit a cannabis dispensary and a cannabis consumption lounge. Subject property is located at 1500 South Division Street, Harvard, Illinois, with a PIN number as stated, 0602-426027. Staff, do you have any reports besides what you've given us?
Nothing further. We have David Drehovil here tonight from Dresko Farms to present the...
Okay, thank you. Will, are the parties, obviously, parties present that are petition forward? Would you please come forward, state your name and address?
Good evening.
Sorry, wait, we got to, I skipped another thing. Is the, does the notice of the, did the notice of the hearing be published per statutory requirements in Northwest Herald?
Yes, it was published on December 20th.
Were the certified notices were sent to property owners within 250 feet of the subject property?
That is correct.
Was, is the certificate of publication completed, the petition and the staff report entered into the record?
That is correct.
Okay. All right. You may now begin. Raise your right hand. You just have to do it.
Well, you can do that.
Well, I don't, you do it.
All right. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you very much.
State your name and address for the record, please.
David Drehovil. Our company is Dresko Farms. We're 21906 West Grant Highway in Marengo.
Okay, go ahead and explain what you want to do to us, to me and the commissioners. Tell us what you want to do or what you're proposing to do.
Okay, so we're a craft grower infuser in Marengo. The one thing that we don't have is a dispensary. We're about, we opened up, started about April, so we're now about ready to get going on extending our offerings as far as going into dispensary. We really like the location at this location here in Harvard, so we would like to do a dispensary and a lounge, a consumption lounge.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to add?
Um...
You're good?
No, not really.
All right. Commissioners, do you have any discussion regarding David's presentation? Jay?
It's not there, but like...
Jay, pull your microphone down, please.
So, one of the questions I was wondering about is, with the building, is it going to remain mostly as is and just interior?
I'm sorry, can't hear you.
Are you going to be doing a lot of work to the building, or is it going to be mostly what is there?
No, I've only been there once. The facade and the structure looks like it's in fairly good shape, but we wouldn't open up until it's in top-notch shape. So, I mean, we would, off the cuff, we're looking at probably a half a million dollars of rehab.
Okay.
Anybody else? Are you going to grow anything there, or just?
No, no, it would just strictly be a dispensary. We grow and we infuse, which is basically making candy and cookies and snacks and infused products. And extraction is what we do in Marengo.
So, part of the building would be for storage of product that you bring up from Marengo, and then part of the building would be for, how many people would you anticipate would be in the lounge at any one time?
That's a very good question.
Or is that a wild guess?
I hope it's more than, than that. I really don't know. The consumption was kind of a sidebar, side thing. I'm not sure. So, we're also looking at possibly putting in a food venue, so we would have some food, maybe some gaming, some different kind of arcade, make it a destination where somebody wants to go. I personally don't understand the consumption side very well. I have an extensive candy manufacturing background, but consumption of cannabis isn't really, really my expertise. But they, the people that work for me feel that the consumption part is an important segment of, it's the up and coming part of dispensaries.
Is that going to be onsite consumption?
Yes.
If we all remember, the original building was blockbuster video way back, yeah.
I mean, I think it's a great location, not just for us, but for you as well, because it's at the end of the town. It's kind of like put away a little bit, so it's not in the middle of town. I mean, I think it works well for us, too.
One of the things I was looking up before was different ordinances for cities where the distance for these types of businesses from schools and parks.
Right.
We don't have anything with that, but a lot of towns that do, it's 500 to 1,000 feet. This location's over 1,000 feet from the nearest school, so I don't see any problems with that either.
I'm sorry.
I'm just saying, I don't see a problem with how far it is from the nearest school, because it's over 1,000.
No, we don't have an issue here.
No.
But yes, you are correct. It's got to be so many feet away from a school and, well, mostly a school. I don't think it's a church, but...
Either way, our town doesn't have any ordinances on that right now, but it's still far enough away. If we did an ordinance, eventually it's still far enough, so there's no problems in that regard from my side.
Yes.
Okay.
Motion.
Yeah, if we could use a motion from someone, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do we have a sec? Oh, sorry, we can't do that. Skip, we got to pack up. Do we have any objectors or supporters? Thank you, David. If you could take a seat and we just, if there's anybody in the gallery that would like to object or support that before we take a motion or take a vote on our motion. Okay, none being, none identifying themselves, so we have a motion from Commissioner Albertson, and we have a second from Commissioner Hereley. Do I do that?
Well, you just, clerk, call the roll.
Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Albertson.
Aye.
Creviston.
Aye.
Grisham.
Aye.
Hereley.
Aye.
Patnodd.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries. This will become before the City Council at the next City Council meeting, which is January 28th at 7:00.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'll be in touch. Thank you, Shal. Okay, I need a motion to close that hearing, please?
My motion.
Commissioner Hereley, motions to close it. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Patnodd. Clerk, call the roll.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, our next item, our next hearing is... Is... Is the hearing for Adrian... How do you spell, say your last name for me?
Adrian Arizmendi.
Okay, thank you. You can take a seat again, yet. The petitioners are, Adrian Arzimendi, HBS, and John Cirker, property owner, the petitioners are seeking a conditional use pursuant to Section 14.3 of the Unified Development Ordinance to permit powder coating and other automobile-related services. The subject property is located at 10 South Jefferson Street, Harvard, Illinois. Before we proceed on to the facts of this hearing, just let it be known for the record that I am an adjacent property owner. Am I voting here or not voting?
No.
I would not be voting on this issue. I will just be conducting the procedure. Staff, anything to add to your report, please?
The only thing I would like to add is that this body and City Council had approved conditional use for Gator Auto Parts, which is on the same property and next door. The city did have some challenges with that property owner and vehicles stored outside. They did receive a ticket at one point and have since cleaned up their property and are no longer in violation. I would only stress that if you do make a recommendation to approve, that you do approve it with that condition number one on my memo, which states, "No vehicles in disrepair or partial disassembly may be stored on the exterior of the property at any time," so that that will be a part of the ordinance if the council approves it and you approve it. So it just gives the city more teeth in case something arises in the future where vehicles are stored outside in a state of disrepair. That's all.
Anything? Commissioners? No questions? Oh, we got to have the petitioner present.
We got to, we got to go back up.
Oh, oh my goodness. All over again. Sorry. Don't be laughing, Charlie. All right, so we, to do this properly, was the notice of the hearing published per statutory requirements in Northwest Herald?
That is correct, on December 20th.
Were the certified notices sent to property owners within 250 feet of this subject property?
That is correct.
Was it certificate of publication completed, certificate of publication completed petition and staff report entered into the record?
Yes.
Okay. Now, the petitioners, could you please come forward, state your name and your address, please, and the clerk will swear you in.
And if I could get you guys to raise your right hand, please? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Go ahead and tell us about what you want to do.
Hi, my name is Adrian Arizmendi. I'm the current owner of HPS. We're a small powder coating company that started up about three years ago. We started it off as a hobby, and we're looking to expand. It's a never-ending, the company can grow in many ways, and we're still looking at all the options, weighing all the options, how we can grow. One of our popular items that we've come across with friends and family is doing their wheels, whether that's aftermarket wheels or original wheels on your current car. You know, the coating that's on the outside fail because of the salt, chips, rust, stuff like that. People just want their stuff to look nice. We're mostly a drop-off service. You know, you bring us said part, and it could be as small as the piece that I passed around, or you're limited to your oven, because it's a baked process. It's not like a spray coating or anything like that. It's a baked process. So, you're limited on the space of the oven. Currently, we only have like a six-foot oven, so anything that fits in there can be coated. The wheel portion, you know, some people don't have two sets of wheels or a place where they can leave their car on jack stands, like in the current city now. You can't leave a car in disrepair, because the city doesn't like it, et cetera, et cetera, HOAs. So, they've asked if they can just come, you know, drop off their car, we pull the wheels off, do the service, return their car. That's the principle of the idea of the powder coating between the tires that we want to do. We don't really want to have anything on the outside, because, I mean, our service typically isn't same-day. It's a couple days out, it usually stays, you know, in the air, it can be moved, so we know it's a nuisance, we don't want to do anything outside. And if they're nicer wheels that, you know, are prone to theft or something, we want it inside anyways. To my right is, we were looking to expand. Because of Gator, there's a lot of higher foot traffic in the area, and we like the location, because there's more of us there. There's bills, there's Gator, there's cars in and out. And with the Hispanic company, you know, the Hispanic community, we have been approached by many next-door Gators that come, you know, as we're coming out or just pulling in to drop something off inside, that, you know, they see the cars or they see, you know, the equipment, and they ask you for another repair shop, this and that. We've explained that we're not, but we're looking, you know, we keep getting asked, "Hey, do you guys do tires? Can you plug my tires?" You know, so-and-so aren't available, or once you get, the tire's coated, not everybody, or the wheel's coated, not everybody wants to work with them, because they're fancy, they're new, they're nice, it's not a factory coating, so not everybody will touch the wheels and tires. So that's primarily what we're looking to do. To the right is my partner here, and he's done more wheels and tires, so let him explain the wheels and tire portion.
So, basically, with the wheels is, when they're all corroded and bad, we sandblast them, back to bare metal, and then after the sandblasting's done, we clean them off, we prep them for powder. It's an electric charge with a gun. You powder it on, you stick it in the oven, and with that cure process, the finish comes out just like paint, but it's stronger than paint, like he was saying. And yeah, as far as the automotive side, I myself have eight to 10 years' experience. I went to UTI, graduated from there with Toyota and Lexus certification, and I'm also ASC certified, so I'd also like to grow in the automotive field and start something of my own there as well.
So, the choice for us was kind of easy to, you know, try to expand on the wheels and tires, because we already have some of the equipment to remove the tires, so we can powder the wheels, and it's a, you know, side service that we can offer to the community, and we're looking to do it by appointment in the same fashion. You know, you come in, "Hey, I'm looking to get my tires changed." You know, "If we have the room, we'll inspect them." "Oh, hey, you do need two tires," you know, or some people already come in knowing that they need tires, because, you know, it's been going flat every day. So, once we take a look, you know, we order them, "Okay, your tires arrive that day, bring your car that day," because that's the day they're going to get changed out. That's pretty much it.
Perfect.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I think it's a pretty good deal. I just had some stuff done. I had to go clear to Delvin. I mean, it's not that far, but it's a convenience when I only live just up the street, so I wish you guys luck.
Thank you.
One of the things I was looking at for this, because it is zoned M1, and this is why you had to come here for the conditional permit in the first place, with what you're doing with the powder coating, honestly, would I think fall more so under industrial, which is permitted without any of this. So, I think it's kind of a no-brainer in that regard, also with everything else that's going on in that neighborhood. I don't really have any questions for you.
Okay. So, we can have a motion?
We got one more question. What about like the fire suppression and stuff for the, for the ovens? You guys get to do any of that, or is that required?
As far as we're aware, it's not, because again, it can be baked in a toaster oven. The oven is just like a home oven. It only gets up to 450 degrees, so it's just like your home oven. As far as we're aware, the only requirement we've kind of seen is just like, if we're going to store tires or like disposable tires, which we've already investigated, we have companies that will come and dispose of the tires, or right next door, we have Gator that's a recycler now. So, that's kind of also a big plus.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any objectors or supporters in the audience that would like to speak on this issue? Hearing none and seeing none, we move on then for a motion from our commissioners to approve or disapprove the...
A motion to approve with the amendment text as is.
We have a motion from Commissioner Albertson. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Creviston. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Creviston.
Aye.
Hereley.
Aye.
Patnodd.
Aye.
Albertson.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries. And then again, this petition will come before the City Council on January 28th at 7:00 PM in this room.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Need to make a motion to close it?
More, don't.
Yeah, well, I got to close that hearing. I need a motion to close the hearing for the powder coating.
Motion to close the hearing.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I'll second. Second from Commissioner Hereley.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Oh, I don't have to say that? Not this one? I'm glad you're there, Mike. Huh? I'm glad you're there. Why? Because I'm not. I called bingo at church. So, if I can do that, I can do this. I'm telling you. You need to start coming there for bingo. Okay, we need to open our next hearing. That is from the City of Harvard. The City Harvard petitioner is seeking a text amendment to Section 8.3H of the Unified Development Ordinance to include anti-monotony standards and Section 2.3 to include definitions of cannabis-related uses. Does the staff have anything to add?
Thank you, Chairman. Just that, we've been discussing the anti-monotony regulations for several months now. This came up when the duplexes in Turtle Crossing were being constructed. They're all exactly the same in appearance, and when it was brought up, we reviewed the UDO, noticed that there weren't anti-monotony regulations in there, which is somewhat uncommon for a zoning ordinance. They used to be in the previous zoning ordinance, but for whatever reason, weren't included in this one. So, we felt it necessary as we start to talk to some national builders and things like that who are interested in building in Harvard, to get something adopted to, in order to just create a nice aesthetic for neighborhoods moving forward. So, it went through, Council had a discussion on it, then Community and Economic Development Committee, who made a recommendation on what's presented in the memo here, to look at something that not only protected neighborhoods, but also was builder-friendly, let's say, something that there's a little bit of leeway here and there that we could work with them on if needed, but at the same time, won't allow this same style look of home to be right next to each other. So, there will be some diversity within the neighborhoods. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Couple technical things that Lori's going to yell at me about. Was the notice of the hearing published per statutory requirements in the Northwest Herald?
Yes, on December 20th.
And I get to skip the next one. The certificate of publication completed petition and staff report that we just heard also entered into record?
They are entered into the record.
Okay. We have a staff report. Are you presenting?
Well, actually, I was just, Tom was going to present, but there's one thing I did one, wanted to add, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but part of this is, as you know, we have some subdivisions that were built that weren't completed, and with this anti-monotony clause, it gives a little bit of leeway, so some of these communities that already had design patterns for those subdivisions could be followed without violating the anti-monotony clause. It gives us a little bit of leeway, so that we can follow what the original intent was for those properties, but also cut it off for any new developments, any new subdivisions and so on.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any discussion or questions?
Okay, read through this. It's a lot more detailed than the previous one we were given, so...
Previously, you've motioned to send it back.
Yeah.
And then now this is what came back.
Yeah. Yeah, so this is a lot less vague than the last one was, specifically with regards to the snout houses, which I think that's pretty reasonable, considering that if you were to try to build a garage at an existing property, it couldn't be in front of the front of your house either way, so I don't see why we should let that happen during construction. So, I think everything in here is fine. I had to reread something three times to make sure I read it correctly, but it's written correctly. I'm good with that. For this one, do we want to just address this one first and/or do both together? Okay.
The definitions, okay. And then you also indicated subdivisions with HOAs in existence. Is that what you were touching on, Jay?
That's what Lou touched on.
That was, you were, okay.
Which I think is a good call-out as well, because it just makes it better for people who are trying to build it already.
Sure. So, I need a motion to approve or disapprove the petition from the City of Harvard to send the anti-monotony...
We need to ask for comments first.
Oh, comments. Oh, comments. Do we have any public comments from supporters or objectors? Unheard and unpresent. Now, I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Grisham?
Yes.
Hereley?
Yes.
Patnodd?
Yes.
Albertson?
Aye.
Creviston?
Yes.
All ayes, motion carries.
We have one more to add to this hearing. It would be the... Oh, the section, the tailing end of the, of the hearing, the Section 2.3 to include the definitions of cannabis-related uses. We've already established, everything was published, sent everywhere we needed to go. Anything from the staff on this?
No, my understanding is, this is a little cleanup effort, just to include the definitions that weren't in there before that was brought up at a meeting when I wasn't here, so thanks for bringing that up.
Okay. Any discussion or comments from our commissioners?
Nope.
Anybody, do we have a motion to approve?
I'm going to approve.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? We have a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hereley?
Aye.
Patnodd? Pat Nod?
Yes.
Albertson?
Aye.
Crevisson?
Aye.
Grishap?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries.
I need a motion to close that particular hearing. We have a motion from Commissioner Crevisson. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second from Commissioner Albertson. The hearing for the monotone, monotony and definition is closed. Now, what do we do? Number eight, now we need a clerk's report. Really? Chairman's report, that's me. I guess the only thing I could think about from a chairman's standpoint is, I'd like to publicly thank Jim Carbonetti and the number of meetings that I saw him attend and be here. The only time he was never here is, I think, when he would be in Boston visiting his family, so for the record, I'd like to thank Jim and, and everything he brought to this commission and his leadership, and I'm grateful to have sat there and at least know somewhat what the heck to do without the cheats. So, that's the chairman's report. I need a motion to adjourn this meeting. We have a motion to adjourn. We need a second?
A second.
We have a second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.